Key angle to screen. We're seeing it Sonya on the screen. I think I'm gonna shift.
Thanks for coming. Are we broadcasting?
We are. I just turned on audio and video.
Do we have a buzz? Do we have Councilor Bressel with us?
Don't think so. No.
Can we text her and make sure she's zoomed back in?
Can you text her?
She was just with us a second ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there she is.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so the roll call, we took Friday the start of our executive session, the other room showed that all councils were present. Councilor Bressel is joining us. Motley, as you can see on our, on our TV screens. Thank you for joining these special town council and council committee meetings Monday, August 26, 2024. We are now, I've declared that we're done with our item two executive session. And we're moving on to item, directly on to item three, agenda review. Can I get a motion? Around an executive session for the end of our meeting?
I would like to move that we have an executive session at the end of the meeting.
Pursuant to one MRSA. Four, section, did I hear you say that? Section four or five, sixty?
Yeah, I said all.
Yeah, so we'll have an executive session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilor Bressel, we're gonna start with you every time we vote, okay? So, Councilor Bressel?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Yep.
Councilor Larue?
In favor.
Councilor Demerits in favor, Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
Favor.
Councilor Kenny?
Favor.
So that's. That's adding an executive session to the end of our agenda this evening. And we will also motion to. Move order twenty-four, one seventy-one to the end of our, end of our meeting after that executive session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Bressel?
Sorry, I faded out for just one second. Can you repeat the question?
We, we are voting to move order twenty-four, one seventy-one. To the table to the end of the meeting.
Great, in favor.
Yep. Favor, Councilor Baker?
In favor.
Councilor Larue?
In favor.
Councilor Demerits in favor, Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
Favor.
Councilor Kenny?
Favor.
Excellent, that moves that to the end of the session. The one thing we did not have on our agenda that I just wanted to bring up, and that we could probably talk about it informally at the end, is. Future items, items of concern. Does anyone wanna, do people feel that we need to have that at the end of the meeting is a formal item?
Do the special meetings?
Yes, we can, we don't typically, but.
Doesn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt. All right, so Councilor Baker, Councilor Larue. Kenny, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Councilor Kenny moves that we add a future item, items of concerns to the end of our agenda. I have a second.
When you say end, do you mean before the executive?
I mean before public comment, so. Public, we have that between, after the town manager update and before public comment. And then we go in after public comment, we send everybody home and go back into our executive session.
Can I move that we do that as a standing thing, or?
We can, we need to do it as a standing thing, so we'll start adding it as a standing thing, I think.
Second.
Second. Okay, Councilor Bressel? Did we use you?
In favor, sorry, my, I'm a little laggy at the moment, in favor.
Uh, Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Councilor Larue?
Favor.
Councilor Demerits in favor, Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
Favor.
Councilor Kenny?
Favor.
Okay, so we'll do that. After item ten. Yep, and then the executive session will be after public comment and before we adjourn. But we'll have. Something to vote on when we come back in from executive session, so we'll have to just make people aware of that. We're gonna take a public comment in a moment. We'll take, anything else on the agenda review?
Yes, you need to also get a motion to move order twenty-four, one sixty-one.
Okay.
So moved, please.
Councilor Larue moved it, Councilor Powers seconded it, I think.
That was me.
Okay, Councilor, Councilor Kenny? Seconded, Councilor Larue moved it. And Councilor Bressel, are you in favor of moving order twenty-four, one sixty-one to the end of our agenda?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Larue?
In favor.
Councilor Demerits in favor? Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Powers? Councilor Kenny?
Yes.
Okay, great. Anything else under agenda review? Close agenda review and we'll move to public comments. Public comments are a time for. Orno residents to speak to us about any item that is not on the agenda. And we ask that as part of our policy that we not talk about employees of the town of Orno specifically, though you're certainly free to talk about. The departments and operations of the town of Orno, and you can talk about us all you want as well. Yes, us being the council. Again, but I, you can use yourself and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My God, this looks lovely. I can see that screen over there. It's nice up there, but it's nice down here too. Thank you very much.
Can we get your first name and last name, just so the people watching at home?
I'm Daniel Lapointe. Running for House District Twenty-four, GOP guy. And. I don't like taxes.
Okay.
Highest mill rate going, just about, come on, guys. Can't miss that picture. Um, I have a question here now. I'm looking at this special council meeting. And in here, there is actually two meetings in one, okay? My concern is that is, why is, is we're a little concerned that, you know, sometimes the authorities. Under administrative. Are not necessarily under a, without property rights, so you know, why? Okay, why, why two of these things? And I'm going to talk a little bit about something that's very near and dear to my heart. Return my properties. Do you hear that? Return my properties. Under the color of law, you have acted administratively. Let's talk about administratively. There was. An original constitution. Then back about eighteen forty-four, they passed another constitution, which was called the Second Constitution, if you will. The administrative constitution. In that, let's see if I can see my notes here. The, the words which change. In the Second Constitution, so much of what you do today. With the UN and all of that, and, and this comprehensive plans and everything is administrative. And it comes straight from the legislature, they operate in that. But you have to understand, you have been served. I served you. We served the governor of the state of Maine back in twenty thirteen. And that was Governor LePage, and we asked them for the original constitution to be adhered to. He did sign that. And we went and served every single head of the legislative body. We were headed out, it took several hours to talk with the governor about this. We did it under a remonstance. Now, they tried to do something to take Trump. Off the ballot, but they didn't do it correctly. So, the governor LePage did sign that, and so it affects has law that the original constitution is what we need to adhere to. Now, the constitution is not self-enforcing. We have to speak above it. For it to be a reality, so hence on here. We, we went immediately from the governor's office and he signed a directive to the then AG Janet Mills to behave and to act accordingly. And so she had a double service. She had us and she had the governor. To obey the original constitution. All he had to do was go to the DA and say, do it. She did not. It went in the wastebasket, as did the rest of the Democratic control legislature at that time. Shortly thereafter, twenty thirteen, I came here with a very special remonstance, the very same thing, and I served you folks. And the attorney for you at that time was Aaron Frye, who is now. We know Janet Mills is the governor. We know that Aaron Frye is CAG. We know that maybe. Anyway, there was no answer on your part, so it stands, okay? So the original constitution, that's common law. That's what we need to be done with here, and the issue is administratively, you are acting under the color of. The title or the color of law. When you deal with my recycling. And the fact of my access, my property, your police department misbehaves, I'm, I'm talking as a friend.
Sure.
I'm talking to you because I think you guys have done a great job. Not yours, but you have a lot of influences that I think miss, that miss lead you. But the issue is at this time. That I'm very much a friend. All of you. I'm coming forward and I'm asking you, the long-term citizen, now, one of the chairs here. Mr. Perry said, you are important to this community. And we want you here, we'll do every effort possible to have you here. Well, I have some difficulties. So I'd like to resolve this within the week, next couple of days, let's talk about it, let's do something. I want some action with immediacy. It's come the next time around. That license is mine. The idea that the permit is mine, your people are misbehaving under the color of law. Now. It isn't just you.
Yeah, you have a five-minute limit on public comment.
I'll close up. Thank you so very much. So the probate system has been in fraud for fifty-six years. The AGs and the DHHS has been taken to task and fined like four million dollars back in the early nineteen nineties. And the thing is that they're misbehaving yet again. There's no small thing on this. And it has to do with the difference between administratively, common law, which constitution are you under? And are they, they are truly operating under the color of law, which means fraud. And so my point is that in great friendship. Open this door up, I've been here before, and I received nothing, but you got rid of the skele way. That was causing all the trouble, and I, oh my God, I think you guys did a great job. I'm so happy to see you, sir. Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Dan.
Yep, thank you for listening to me, my. My licensing, my standing. As, as in, here, in, in the Bible, it says that this property is re, okay, this is mine. I'm standing in front of you and I'm, I'm saying to you, that's Isaiah sixty, and what is it? Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, said it very clear. The property's mine, you come and let's talk and let's see where we can come together because. I don't want any harm here. I don't want any bill to go to some lady that's on social security trying to make ends meet.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Dan.
Hi, Mike.
Yes, please introduce yourself and.
Carolyn Farnsworth, I am now the owner of Pass Pizza. And I wanted to just speak about the Route Two controversy. If that's what you want to call it. One of the, one of the things that worried me is the parking. Now, if any of you knew my husband, he was. The man in the town of Orno that fought for parking constantly. And with the businesses that we have downtown, this literally is downtown Orno. What you see out these windows and you make a turn down Mill Street and you see those shops and that is our town. That is our little downtown. And when it was brought to my attention about redoing the road and. Doing circles and all these kinds of things, it kind of bothered me when I was looking at the plans on your website. About parallel parking on Mill Street. It's my understanding perhaps that's gone away, hopefully. Because it just would not be practical in any way, shape, or form. And also the thoughts of Pine Street being one way. I drive a thirty-six-foot RV. And negotiating corners and being able to go down Pine Street with a big tractor trailer truck from main distributors bringing my. Bud Light, Michelob Light, and all the good stuff. You know, I, I don't understand how that would all work. So that was my, my big, my big problem when I was looking at that. I totally understand the town of Orno. Has got a huge traffic issue. I mean, when the college is here. It's unbelievable. In the summertime, it's wonderful. When you come off Forest Avenue and Beddick Road, you don't, I mean, all you have to do is yield. You look real quick and then you're right out on Main Street, so it is a seasonal kind of thing. With the traffic and, and I, I totally understand that. Something needs to be done, but I really don't feel that the plans that I looked at were really all that. Well-laid plans. I did see like Woodman's, I don't know how to read blueprints, but I saw like a red dotted line through his deck. So I don't know if that proposal was going to take some of his deck to be able to make that new traffic flow. I don't, I don't know how to read it, but I'm thinking red is bad. So that's kind of what I assumed. So anyway, that was, that's why I'm here, that's my concern. I'm varying my husband's cross that I want to fight for parking for all of our business downtown businesses. I have wonderful new lady next door that's putting in a bakery. And she has nutritional drinks and she's the most wonderful tenant. She's been there a very short time. But coming in. And to parallel park to run in and get a cup of coffee and a muffin, just, it's just not. And I, and I went online and there is such a thing as parallelophobia. And I, and I went online and there is such a thing as parallelophobia. The fear of parallel parking. So, that being said, I just wanted, you know, it to be heard. And the other thing that I wanted to comment on, and I, I spoke to the, our new town manager. And I would like to see from the police department, and I don't know if this is something that can happen. But years ago, there was always a police officer that would just walk around and just check on us. Not just paths, I mean, just, I just, I would love to see kind of that go back in time. Kind of an old little downtown, I mean, we're, I just, I don't even know how many square feet we are in the downtown. But just to have, I don't know any of the police officers anymore, I used to know them by their name and they knew us. And they would come in and just come in the front door and just poke their way through and say hi to people and go out the back door and just kind of make themselves known. And I really would love to see something like that come back. And I know, um, Ed, I think it was last name, oh, came by and talked to me. And I was, I was shocked when he introduced himself and he said, you know what, I would like to talk to you. And I said, really? I said, really? And so I said, let's go out on the sidewalk, let's go walking. So, he and I were walking around and I just, I was very thrilled to think. That it's the little town feeling again and that people are coming out and they're asking and they're coming to the, the shop owners. And it's the people that, that really, we, we just feel like we need that input. But sometimes coming to a council meeting isn't always necessarily able to do that. So, that was just, I would like to see.
Well, I appreciate you being here tonight. Um, we are gonna, um, we are talking, we are talking about kind of. Uh, let you off the hook a little bit with the items that are on the agenda, but you got started, it's like, who am I to stop you, right? So, um, we're gonna.
I'm a force to be reckoned with.
But I, hopefully a force to be worked with too. So, we, we are talking a lot about through two-quarter stuff later on this afternoon and we've heard a lot from the community, so thank you for coming in. And, um, yeah, we'll, members of the public will with us as we get to that agenda, I will be able to participate in that conversation as well, so, but thank you. Any other public comment? Anybody, any hands raised, Pete?
No hands raised at this time.
So, the, why two, would you please?
Two public comments, two meetings?
Why two meetings tied into one?
Yeah, we're having a committee meeting, uh, and discussion workshop and we're all together, we're trying to get together, we're trying to get together two nights a month. Instead of three or four nights a month, so that's kind of the approach we're taking.
So, this is succinct town business.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sure. Appreciate you asking. Um, so, next on, on the agenda is consent, we'll close the pu- uh, public comment, there's another public comment at the end of the meeting. And typically our practice, we, we like to hear from people, um, who have an interest when we're talking about things on the agenda. Uh, item five is a consent agenda, it's moved as a single item with no discussion by councilors or members of the public. A member of the council or public can request to have anything moved off the consent agenda. Seeing no movement on that front, we will, um, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the agenda. Second, Council Baker, Council Powers, uh, Council Berthold, so we're voting on the consent agenda, how do you vote?
Favor.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Council Arway?
In favor.
Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
Favor.
Uh, the consent agenda passes unanimously, so that will change our agenda for our schedule for September. And we will have a new set of meeting times, uh, through the end of November. And those are posted with the agenda and will be posted with our council materials. Um, moving into new business, we have, um, order number twenty-four, one seventy-five. An order authorizing the town manager to accept and execute a fifty-foot right-of-way easement from, is it Elger- Elgiandro Strong?
What's that?
Alejandro.
Alejandro Strong, sorry. Um, DBA H Delaney Properties LLC to create a plow turnaround area at the end of Spencer Street in substantially the form as presented. Can I get a motion to put this before us?
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion from the town manager, the Public Works Department, or?
I mean, this is something predates becoming, but it's an easement for that road, so we can have an appropriate turnaround for plow trucks. Um, I understand it's something that's been worked on for a while, the easement's been reviewed by the attorneys and it's ready to be signed, so we need your permission to execute.
Right, was this just out of the goodness of his heart, that they, or that, that this, I guess it's, uh?
That one is, I'd have to refer, but I do not believe we would.
Billy, I'm sorry.
I said, was this just, I, I mean, this company is giving the town an easement, I think in return for maintaining it?
We're gonna, yeah, we're, that's my understanding right now, we're gonna actually, we're in the process of, uh, getting that roads up to date and getting it paved. And that was one of the last things we were waiting for, so. Well, if you, you look at it, it'll come and it comes to a dead end, then it's all dirt. We'll actually pave it down in there so we can get the trucks in around, turn around and get. Yeah, sure. So, we'll upgrade it so we can use it for a better purpose. Yeah, and we'll maintain that, that section of the road as well.
And we're not gonna just keep paving the, the, the trail all the way to the school?
That is not what I was told.
That'd be nice.
Okay, so the pavement is just the, the part that's marked, the short area marked. And then the easement is through the open land out between the streets, between Westwood and Spencer.
We plan on keeping everything within the boundaries, we're not gonna be expanding it, it's just, yeah, we get the trucks in around.
Got it.
And the trail, um, the trail exists now, right? I mean, I had to get off. Yeah, I think they're doing that in a separate issue altogether. Okay, great. Okay, any other questions, thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Um, any other questions? Yep, um, we've got a motion in front of us, uh, Council Berthold?
In favor.
Council Baker? Council Arway? Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
Favor.
And Council Kenny?
Favor.
That's, it passes seven to zero, and, uh, just in case I, I think I neglected to mention it. The consent agenda passed by a vote of seven to zero. And all of the items we took up at the beginning of our meeting, moving agenda items around, creating agenda items all passed unanimously as well. Um, item twenty-four, one seventy-six, an order appointing Michael Costello to the Comprehensive Plan Committee, could we get a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and any discussion here from staff or Mitch Stone? Our Assistant Town Manager and Director of the Office of Economic Development?
So, um, we had a resignation, Lisa Buck, who represented, uh, the Comprehensive Plan Committee from the planning board. Um, and Mike Costello is also on the planning board, so he, he had agreed to fill that planning board spot, spot in her stead. And so this is just a replacement of, of that kind of appointee.
Gonna pay Michael the same thing we're paying Lisa? Yeah.
Thanks for the record.
Volunteer, need to volunteer opportunities to serve the town of Orno.
Don't need to call it out. We're getting free work, don't call it out.
Yeah, all right, any other, thanks, Mitch, thanks, Mitch, any other questions? Okay, Council Berthold?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Council Arway? Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Passed unanimously, we'll thank Michael for his service and all the members of the Comprehensive Plan Committee for the work they're doing. It's a, it's a lot of very detailed, intricate, intricate work. Um, order twenty-four, one seventy-seven, order approving the mini-grant proposal from Sam Diamond of seven hundred and fifty dollars for painting of pickleball lines. On one tennis court at Orno High School, can we get a motion?
So, move, second.
Okay, it's moved by Council Marks, seconded by Council Powers. Um, yeah, I've got some issue, we've talked, I have some to start the discussion unless someone wants to go ahead of me. Um, so I appreciated the back and forth with the school, the school board, um, uh. And the, the vote that the school board had to, to move ahead with this, it is in fact their, their facility. Um, Sam Diamond brought this into us before we'd updated our guidelines and I talked to her this afternoon. And, um, you know, ideally, I think the best way to facilitate this is. It's the school's property, it's the town's resources, I assume, and Sam doesn't have any interest in, you know, checking, running down a vendor and things like that. So, to the extent that we could have our very able staff at the school and the, and the town execute this addition to the facility, makes a lot of sense. Are people comfortable with that in terms of this mini-grant? So, essentially, we're committing seven hundred and fifty dollars for the mini-grant for this request. With the understanding that the school and the town are really gonna be the ones to bring it together.
So, I'm not comfortable with us directing that. Um, you know, I don't think that's our spot to direct that to happen. Um, I'm comfortable if staff, that fits into what staff is doing, it both like, we don't direct, have nothing to do, we don't direct any staff. So, I'm not comfortable directing staff, um, if, I would ask for that to come from them on whether that's something they take on. Or if it's something that gets done outside.
We do direct the town manager, so that's the one thing, you know, we, so my thinking is this is an order. Um, approving the mini-grant proposal with the understanding, the intent of the council is that the town manager would execute the. Execute the implementation as he chooses.
I think that's, I think that's kind of, that, that seems not proper to me. We, we direct the town manager, but we don't direct him, how to direct staff necessarily.
Yeah.
So, I think we're, I think we're going over a lot of everything.
Can I just ask a question before we get into what the amendment is? Can we just hear from staff? Um, because, I mean, it, it makes sense to me that this is a mini-grant where it's school-owned property. And I, I would be surprised if the school wanted any random citizen to pick the contractor who was gonna touch their property. So, I'm thinking our town manager's already talked to the superintendent and maybe you could update us a little on how you would see it working.
Yeah, I think it's pretty civil, cause I get an email from the superintendent, they wanna pick the vendor, there's a little bit that the cost is around eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, they thought. But the way it was worded to me, we're gonna cut them a check for seven hundred and fifty dollars and pickleball lines will show up on those courts. Um, we can check back up, but that was the way. The town staff was going to handle it, I would, uh, I guess if you wanna put it in the direct, I would direct the finance director to write a check to the school for seven hundred and fifty dollars. That was gonna be the end of the.
Just authorizing the seven hundred and fifty dollar check to go to the school, assending the school, how the lines get put on.
I guess with what you shared, it is, I mean, it was not requested by the school. I think we've been inserted into the process such that the school had to make that decision, we couldn't do it for them. They said yes, I definitely don't think we should be sending money to Sam Diamond to give to the school, to do the work, to.
But we, we have done that on, uh, before, it's gone to the request.
It has, and that's the question about this mini-grant, it's a challenge, we have, I mean, I wanna get it done, don't wanna make it more complicated than it needs to be. But how do you, how do we fund it from the mini-grant if it's not gonna adhere to the mini-grant guidelines?
I think though, the last time that the money went, like, are you thinking of the lighting, Leo, on the field? That is a nonprofit that was formed to fundraise for that lighting on the soccer field, so there was an entity to send the money to. It didn't get sent to an individual citizen, right, for that project, so.
All of the other ones have gone to individual citizens, they've been responsible for send, for spending it.
Sure.
And, and back to, not to beat the dead horse, but I do think we need to be, the, the, one of the key things that we've talked about is this. This mini-grant thing is ours, it shouldn't ever come up where we're accepting and then turning around and asking staff to do something for the mini-grant. Such as paint lines and things like that, and then, and then also, we shouldn't call them, I think in a meeting to say, hey, is this okay? Cause I, we've kind of brought this up before, that that's, it's kind of a lot of pressure for someone to come forward at that point and say, yeah, no, this isn't, doesn't fit in with my schedule. Sorry, is a hard position to put them in, so can, can we maybe have an agreement on us not trying to direct staff from this position?
Yeah, Leo, I think the thing is, is that that isn't really exactly how this went, like, staff has already taken charge of this and put it back on our agenda. I mean, we looked at it and said, this doesn't need a lot of specs. And so, we asked staff, as I remember, how they wanted to handle it, maybe can speak to this, but my understanding is that Clint said he wanted to speak to Meredith about it. The school board had a meeting about it and it's town staff that are bringing this back to us now. This isn't us saying, we need to come back to this mini-grant and make a decision, this is town staff saying to us, as I understand it. Here's what we think, here's how you think, we think you should proceed on it, is that correct, Clint?
Yes, and again, at the request of the school, the school said they were ready to move forward, they would take care of it. I mean, if they asked, I mean, we'd always listen if there was something else, but they didn't ask, other than we gotta get the mini-grant approved. So, that's, I was just, again, logistically, there is something here to give it to a resident, to give to the school. I write that doesn't follow kind of the intent of your policy, but we are following the intent of the requester to get it to the school to do it, that's the way it's gonna happen, so.
And Dan spoke into the requester and she sounds fine with that, so I think we're fine.
Yeah, that, that doesn't seem like an issue.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't wanna belabor this, especially for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I guess to echo kind of. The, to echo what Leo was saying, but also to take it from another approach. My primary concern with this mini-grant is that it's essentially. A, to me, it seems like a citizen requesting funds from one town department to be given to another town department. That doesn't, that, that, that seems to go against the, uh. Purpose, the, the, the informal purpose of the mini-grant program. Um, it just, it's, and yes, I mean, Dan brought up the fact that, you know, not following the current guidelines, which, whatever, we can get around that administratively. But just, it just, it doesn't. Yeah, this seems like a hard money type of something that should be budgeted for. Because it's one town department giving money to another town department as requested by a citizen. Ultimately, I'll vote that, it's, yeah, I, that's just my concern with it.
See, someone's sprinkled, Sonya, did you have something you wanted to share? I didn't want that to get lost.
Um, I, I think I'm ready to move ahead with a vote on this personally, thanks though. Um, I, I hear what others are saying and I, I like that we have a sort of better process for this moving forward that has some more clarity. Um, and also, you know, this came in before that process was, was set, and I think it would be fair to just move ahead with a vote on this item and, and perhaps not belabor it.
I, I just have one thing to say about it, I think this is a good example of how we should do things personally. Because we are going to give it to an individual who's gonna take it to, um, an outside contractor that was, that was in this. For, for a lot more money, you know, um, pending if we could get approval from the school. This school said yes, and they're also like, we can do this for a lot cheaper, like, this just seems like a no-brainer to me. Like, yes, it's going from one, one entity to another in the town, but it's facilitated by, uh, by an individual. Who was gonna go out to an outside contractor, it just wasn't going.
Feels like we found a cutaway forward.
So, I find it to be, I find it to be like a way of getting the thing done and, and, and as. An efficient way as possible.
You've come forward as a budget request and been, you know, part of the Parks and Recs department, to, you know, grant seven hundred and fifty dollars to the, to the school department to paint the lines. Um, you know, that kind of thing, but it's sort of that inherent messiness that we're looking for, you know, getting the yes for, helping people get the yes when they have ideas in Orno, so.
Yeah, I mean, it is sort of an unorthodox way for us to be using these funds, especially now we've set up rules for them. But as I recall, the initial motivation for us creating this fund was to facilitate an easy way for. Ideas for building community to happen in Orno and creating the capacity for pickleball to be played, which is a fast-growing sport. Something a lot of people wanna do. Uh, I think it's a good idea and I'm in favor of it, although going forward, I think the things like this that are gonna be moving from department to department. I think we might say this might not be the right forum for this.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rob, I, I just wanna say, I agree with that comment entirely, and I guess I just wanna be really clear, it isn't really moving from department to department. Like, the RSU is an entirely separate legal entity from the town of Orno. And that's important to note, it is not a department of the town of Orno, it's an entirely separate legal entity. And I actually think that things that come from the public and encourage both of us entities to talk to each other is a good thing. Cause I don't think we always do it often enough, and we're doing it much more lately, and I'm appreciating all the ways that it's happening, whether that's coming from staff. Or whether that's coming from the public, but it is an entirely separate legal entity, and that's.
I get that, symbolically, one part of the town to another part of the town.
So, if we, could we, Clint, in terms of your direction from this or with this, would it be best if it said? Order approving the town manager to transfer. Set up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for the painting of pickleball lines on one tennis court at Orno High School to RSU twenty-six?
And I think you, I would leave per the request of Sam.
Per the request of, okay?
I think it's important to just remember that's what initiated it.
Got it, you have any, are you right?
Oh, I'll get it.
Are you getting, okay. At five forty-eight, I mumbled through an amendment, so. Well, so I'm gonna propose that we amend order twenty-four, one seventy-seven to read. Order approving the town manager to transfer a sum of up to seven hundred and fifty dollars. From mini-grant proceeds for the painting of pickleball lines on one tennis court at Orno High School pursuant to the request of Sam Diamond.
To RSU twenty-six.
To RSU twenty-six, this. Yep.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, Sonya, are you, any more discussion about it before you? So, we're gonna have to approve the amendment and then approve the order, so let's. Council Berthold?
In favor.
On the, uh, the amendment. Amendment. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Lawrie, Council Demerits in favor. Councilor Marks. Council Powers.
In favor.
Council Kenny. All right, now we've approved the. Amended order. Need to vote again on the order itself. Yep. Um, can I get a motion to approve order twenty-four, one seventy-seven as amended?
So, again.
Moved and seconded, Council Berthold.
In favor.
Okay, Council Baker.
In favor.
Council Lawrie.
Favor.
Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks.
In favor.
Council Powers.
In favor.
Council Kenny.
In favor.
Okay. Um, that concludes, uh, thank you very much.
That order, though, I wouldn't close the special because we moved in items. That's just because of that, yeah.
That was a unanimous vote, um, and I'm not gonna close the special town council agenda because we're gonna come back to special town. You come back to special town council business items at the end of our meeting pursuant to. Our agenda review decisions at the top of the meeting. But we will open the workshop, um, on the community development committee, which is, um. On the Route Two corridor project, and this is where, um. Sorry, my notes, where we'll, uh, discuss. What we've learned and kind of develop a direction on where we go from here. And I wanna first thank, um, staff has done, I think, a really good job. Of synthesizing the com, bringing the comments together, collecting the comments for us. We have a, a spreadsheet that's now, it's available to the public that has access to the promises that come in. Really, really helpful and, uh, for us to review, and I look forward to the, I know. Work with town manager and the staff have been doing to move this forward, so. And Carolyn, you can jump in now anytime you want.
Well, I mean, I pretty much said. You know, I, I needed to get that out there.
Yeah, thank you. I'm teasing you. I, I do that a lot. I'm sorry. Dan? We're gonna move, we're gonna get a brief. That was a side joke, though. It wasn't like an opening for.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's get, we're gonna get our presentation from staff, and then we'll have a chance to talk, and we'll, we'll recognize you to talk.
So you just opened up the blue sheet part of.
No, we're on that part. Yep.
All right, I wanna make it a point. That in the earlier meeting. Carolyn said, it's now here in the meeting, complete. Okay, so that it's not missed, and it's not put in the wrong place. Because her needs. To do with her business.
Right.
Commerce and the neighbors and the whole community at large.
Yeah.
We have.
And it was twenty minutes ago. We're gonna remember it. We're gonna turn to Clint, and he's gonna give us a briefing, and then we're gonna have, we're gonna have.
We have another chance to comment.
You'll have a chance to comment on this item as part of, as it comes up, because this is a committee meeting, and we typically. Invite members of the public who attend with us and have an interest, uh, you know, going in and have a, a brief comment on this topic.
Couldn't be better. I mean, I appreciate so much, yes, because this interacts with the community. Carolyn's needs. And, and her business needs, uh, uh, I mean, my god, Orno and Pat's one and the same, honestly.
Yeah, yeah. Um, that was just me teasing, so we're gonna turn to Clint.
So have issues as far as this corridor goes.
Okay, we're gonna, Clint's gonna give us a briefing first, and we're gonna have a council discussion, and then we'll recognize you as part of that discussion, okay?
So that's how you wanna do that?
That's how we're gonna do it.
Respect.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. So I got a few things that we're gonna make available afterwards, but this is, and I, and I appreciate the flexibility of community. This has been a lot of information, a lot of. Details to bring together, especially in the first couple of months of being here. And some great comments to synthesize and to bring together with some great recommendations and themes. The theme, there's only one theme I'm seeing here right now, and that's a chance to be fully engaged and fully certain. Moving forward in the process. And there are a lot of other questions that we're going to answer and going to go through, but I focused staff's time. My time on what is the process from. August twenty-sixth to a point where we need some decisions. And we are on a decision tree, and so some of the information in the packet included the, uh. Some outlines of key dates, but I mean, certain things that hasn't maybe been stressed enough. This is a funded design project through the federal government and the state government. There's two point seven million dollars appropriated for the town of Orno, design a project if we want. And that design cost to us is ten percent right now, three hundred thousand dollars more. Process you're finishing is included in that infographic that he's bringing up right there. This is what a project at M D O T would look like. And I know it's small and people at home can enlarge and do it. You are at block two on the far left where the dollar signs show up. We have not gone past block two. You spent a year getting to the point to decide whether you want to kick in. Your three hundred thousand. So in doing this, we've seen some concepts, and I'm going to stress again, concepts. Not what we will build, concepts to bring on more conversation, to fully inform D O T as they go through a design stage. That stage from where it says step three, project funded, all the way over till you see a P D R. Will take a year and a half to two years, and there's at least two informational meetings programmed in their planning with the community to have more input. They also will meet one-on-one as they get to the later part. With direct land right issues, and I think that there's some more information we need to share with the community on this. So what I did. And hopefully it's not too scary, is, and this will be made available right after, is I put together. In a spreadsheet, cause I needed to get very linear, of how we could go forward from today. To get to some points, and as I lay this out, as it comes around to you, it starts with tonight. We're gonna have a council meeting. But I think there's certain steps that we need to finish so that you can go forward, and this is what I'm hoping that from tonight. We can have some of those steps to go forward with, which includes seeing the initial concept plan from Sebago. Forming a focus group, and then also it's been suggested that maybe we would have a right-of-way working group. Two groups of people, the focus group, keeping us on time for what's in orange. The working group that would be throughout with right-of-way questions. Why am I losing? Eight inches, eight feet, whatever. Can it be realigned? Can it be this? It's another place because the individual landowners will have direct input with M D O D, but it also gives an opportunity for the council to take some input. And as you'll see in these timelines, I indicate that at every informational level. Where we have an informational meeting, the council will, will put that into writing as to the key themes we heard and send that forward. To whoever's doing the design, which could be M D O T staff, could be a contract with Sebago, could be a lot of different versions. But this is pretty methodical, and you will see it is heavily front-loaded. This is a lot of work now. There are dates we need to hit. If we're going to be considered for future funding and to get this project rolling. There's only so many of them that are gonna occur. I did some research through the state's website. It appears that we're one of few that has the funding through the federal government and state already waiting. But there's over fifteen in the state of Maine doing planning with, of concepts. So if we're delaying, does money get moved around? I don't know. I honestly can't say that for certain, but I know for certain, there is federal funding naming the town of Orno. Getting two point four million dollars for its design, and the state of Maine has said, we, we will do ten percent. And they're waiting for Orno to say, do you want to kick in ten percent? I think we need a better concept, an enhanced revision. Not highly technical, but I'm no more than maybe five, six additional drawings. But we also need to see the finalized report from Sebago. And with all the input you've given and where we're at. One of the things that we're working towards is, could we get the majority of these questions answered? Quickly, and I think we can. We can't answer them all, because some of the questions are contingent upon what we end up building. So we gotta, there is a, there's no way to get away from a leap of faith. There is a point where you know the design work still has to be done, and there's going to be more changes. That's the whole point of going from a concept to design. And that's the one risk we're gonna have to take as a community, is our desire to see. A new corridor that improves safety and flow, and the objectives you put forward. Where we wanna be knowing that it's three hundred thousand dollars right now, real soon. And if we like the final design and we wanna build it, it's three million. In the memo, I put some other numbers in there. This is hard. Because there will probably be no way that this project would be done in one fell swoop. So the cost will go higher, and we have time value, money issues to deal with. But under current funding mechanisms, the town's portion, if we forget that what we're in, would either be twenty to fifty percent. So it would double or be half of the total cost of the entire project. Now, there is a way where it costs you nothing. If you did nothing, you will never pay anything out of local property taxes. There may be matches here and there for certain enhancements, but maintenance surface treatment is a state-funded program. They will come out here. Just put payment down, and you will pay none of that, and nothing changes. It stays, right like you see it. And that may be a desired option, but I wanted to make sure you saw that. But then if we don't do this at the ten percent share for final construction. Through backs, it's a twenty percent share program in multiple projects, most, in most circumstances. It can go as high as fifty percent if it's all on us and our requesting project. But again, these are all the different ways, and again, to say it's perfect, this is how it's set up currently. It could change. Those are the current numbers. So again, three million construction could grow to six to twelve million. If you ignore future costs and phasing.
Are you talking about, though, are you talking about? If we fund it through a different mechanism and we don't go this, this way.
Correct.
Three million dollars, you know, if.
Three million is what's in front of us right now to do the whole quarter.
Yep.
If we don't do it that way, I would say you're looking six to twelve or even as high as fifteen. And again. For, again, I don't know, we haven't designed it. For work on Route Two, this is the whole. Tough question. What do you want to build? What do you not want to build? Could we turn it into an eight million dollar project? Maybe. Could we turn it into an eighty million dollar project? Again, very possible. Right now, we're contemplating a pretty good estimate of about thirty million dollars to do the whole corridor. If we keep shrinking it, and we made, there's input we have, that Sebago wants to shrink this. They've heard there's things that we shouldn't do or don't want to do as a community. It will result in some savings as we go forward. There's also a couple that are cost increasers. And we may not be able to fit them in, in this thirty million dollar project, if we even end up wanting to do it. But I'd like to get Sebago back in this with a concept plan in front of you. And then in that orange area, we start kicking off a very heavily week-to-week meeting with, with citizens. Where we hit some s- very big issues, and we would even spend a whole meeting on all the questions answered to date that we can answer. And would be on the website, would be fully engaging as much as we can. But well, the way I see this is on nine-nine. I'm gonna work with Sebago to get them kind of a rough estimate on what an enhanced plan would cost, and if the timeline's right. If those are right, on the twenty-third, I would need approval to fund those, and we'd also be making commitment. That when that is presented, we're moving forward on design, which would take you all the way to P D R. Which you have not yet agreed to build it. You would design it, and this could be a very well-designed project or poorly-designed project. That gets put on a shelf and we never do, and our cost for that is three hundred thousand dollars. But if we don't do anything, and this is where I've shared with a few of you. Doing nothing is sometimes a decision. If we do not make decisions in the next few months, month and a half. We're saying no, for now. And that means we can lose this project or other designs, or those monies may go back. I don't think it's necessarily gonna happen quick. But again, if they think we're never going to move forward. There would be concerns. So we gotta get to a point where we're really saying, let's proceed a little bit, or we're not ready yet, and we're gonna take a few more months. Fine. But again, when you start saying we're done and we're out, or we're just not deciding, they're probably gonna find ways to reallocate that fund. That would be my assumption, is I mean, is what I've seen in government. That's the best I can do. The last one, as I go to the questions. This is a potential resolve that is very draft of what you could ask on the twenty-third to get us moving forward. It does not commit you to building the project, but it does commit the town to saying we're ready to design the project. But it also inputs many steps of what we're gonna do to bring it as a community up kind of project. We're gonna have a voice the whole way through.
Matt?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I, I have a, a s- a strange, not strange question, but I have a question that may not have an answer, and that is, I know. Underneath Route Two.
Oh, picky sunlight.
There is, um, a very old sewer that we would be replacing if we did this project. And my question is like, like, when would we be replacing that sewer if we didn't do this project? And if we didn't do this project, how much is it gonna cost for us to replace that sewer? Um, by like digging up the road and doing all that and then.
That is one of the questions, yeah, and that is one of the questions we wanna answer. We will have to do it.
Yeah.
Right now, it's. It's waiting on this to see if you'll do it, cause it would save them opening the road. If it breaks tomorrow, we're opening up the road and fixing the break tomorrow. That's the reality, what it's about. Areas are over a hundred years old. And that's what they were looking to fix. If we have to do it on our own, we have to fix the road we dig down in to get at it. That would be on our cost.
I go back by your house, man.
The, the only reason. The only reason I ask is because if, if, if us fixing, let's say we had to fix all that sewer, if that's gonna cost us. You know, five million anyways, then we're already, we wouldn't get the road, and we'd have to fix the sewer. Whereas this way, we could fix the sewer and get a new.
And the sewer cost is still ours.
No, no, I understand that. I know that that's our.
I get, that's one of the numbers. Yes, and we've seen that in the questions. That's one of the ones that we wanna walk through in this process and get an answer. To the community.
Uh, I, that would tip me highly in one direction, um, if, if it, if it's looking like. They're getting to be the same.
I mean, these are going to be.
Highly.
Highly researched estimates. Meaning that you can, I mean, it'll be a little bit better, but you can go on Google right now and look up the cost per, per foot to install sewer lines. We'll get it a little bit more refined. We have experts, you know, that we work with, and we have a team of staff that's very good at this. We'll give you a good number. But again, it will be based on estimates, not design.
The only difference is, the road will be open.
Yep.
We're still paying for the.
Right, correct.
So.
Can I just ask, though, apart from the cost, which I understand requires research and looking at all that. Does the town not maintain some sort of schedule of when they expect sewer lines to need to be redone, and when was this one expected to need to be redone?
We will double check it, but my understanding is, is there's a lot of lists and there's not a detailed of year by year for the next twenty-five. Which roads and which sections to do next and when.
But I assume we know when it was last done and how long they typically last.
Installed a hundred years ago.
That's what I wanna know. So could you put that louder, sir?
Though, play pipe.
One hundred, okay, thank you.
It is pretty high on the priority list, but waiting, because if this project worked, it would make sense to do with that. So my guess is if it's not done, it's probably one of the next projects.
And I probably misspoke. There is a priority list in that, from what I've had, heard from Chris. We know how old Pipe is in the town. And there's a bunch of pipes that's old. That's when you hear priority list. Because of its age, it's, it's high up in our minds and in our thoughts and our planning. But there's no specific, do this five hundred feet first and second and third and fourth.
That's helpful. Thank you. Thanks, Mitch.
So that's, that does bring up the other point that we're talking about three hundred thousand and three million. We absolutely would need to understand.
Yep.
What the, what the, that cost is that we'd be bearing if we move forward. But the, it's back to, back to this, the bigger, the bigger question is, I, I. When, and maybe you said it, and I just didn't quite understand, when will we hear answers to some of these really? You know, we've heard from this school board, um, that they've taken a vote or proclamation or what did they?
Yeah, yeah, they said it's a proclamation, yeah.
Confirmation that they are very close to a, you know, there is, there is a lot of opposition or concerns with. Most of the elements of the current plan, and I think we need to hear. A response to it and not, i- in the responses, okay, we won't do that, there, you know, either a response, okay, this doesn't make sense, we won't do it. Or defending why we would do it. So we, I think we need a response to a lot of questions. For me, I definitely would need a response to a lot of questions before I'm, I'm willing to even talk about spending three hundred thousand. And just broadly, I assume, because one of the things that the, the school board said was they didn't want Goodrich going two ways either. Um, we've had a lot of, a lot of concern about parallel parking on Mill Street. Is it safe to assume that? The elements that aren't Route Two really do. What, um, they land with us, or we're responsible for it. Non-Route Two questions, is that an accurate way to look at this, or?
Man, I guess you gotta be careful when you say what isn't, isn't a Route Two. It's a major, Route Two's a major collector. It has minor collectors that flow, flow into it. They're a lower road, so we have more flexibility. But they do flow in to a major collector, so we can't mess up the state's approach to its road system. Without their approval, because it is, that is, we don't, the town of Orno does not own the road. That is own, yeah, that is a road.
Do own the other.
Correct, and where those right-of-ways and easements, where they start and stop, but I mean, it's a collaboration. We have to work together. We have to figure out how we want them to meet in with each other.
Right, but I'm, I'm just wondering if at the end of the day, if, if they design this and say, no, we, we need to go Goodrich both ways. Can the town still say, no, that's a, that's a town road?
I don't think that, I mean, I'm, yes, D O T can make decisions. They really can. They can, but they're not going to. They're, they're just not that kind of agency. They haven't been for over a decade. If, they will not do the project, rather than changing it to something. If they will not do the project rather than changing it to something we're very upset by. I mean, but I mean, we not individuals, we the collective community and. And again, they will present tough decisions to you. If they're adamant about something, they're gonna say no. For example, putting in a traffic light. If we really, really wanted a traffic light because of one of our side ropes. And we had a really, really good reason. They'll hear it, but it really does come down to, you don't have enough traffic there to warn it. So what we they don't wanna get into the game of they put in traffic signals in places they're not needed. So this is where I'm trying to get us through. I'm trying to focus process where I know the decisions in this process are the key factors. But we gotta start with process to get to the decisions. And I'm trying to develop that first rather than answering everything. But I will say. If everything goes as planned, you asked me the date, nine twenty three oh four twenty four. Is the date I would hope to have a very good comprehensive list of responses. But we've got a, am I on track to keep going this way? Or are we gonna wait? No, let's wait and wait a couple more weeks. And if we're gonna wait a couple more weeks and talk on nine nine. About the process, then those dates keep moving out further and further and further. You know, you gotta kinda, are we going or are we not going?
Going or not going? What do you mean by, because I think for me, I this was, this is, that step is absolutely what I expected our next. Our next step to be before we're talking about spending three hundred thousand. Is that what you're saying?
And that's.
Cause I'm on, I that's.
Yep, that first whole white section gets us to the orange section. On the same day that you would see the answers and all that information, that this resolve that I just handed out in a draft would be approved on the same night. Knowing that we're gonna, that we've seen the concepts, we've heard the answers, we're doing another enhanced plan to get some other drawings to see how they all look when we're pulling them together. But we're going to the next step. Those are the steps I put in and we can change these. But I had to come up with something to start from. So this is a process that keeps us moving.
Councilor, sorry.
Yep.
So um Clint, just process wise, um I understand that we're being asked on the twenty third as a council. Take a vote on funding the three hundred thousand. And at that point in time. You predict that we would have from Sabego both their original designs that we've seen once already, but with the choices between option A and B. Is gonna come back. We would not have the enhanced design, whatever we've asked them to do beyond A and B options. But we would have, that's what you're saying, correct? Yeah, we would not have the enhanced design. We would only have the original A and B options with which one they're recommending.
With all the feedback that they've kind of worked into a final conceptual.
And we would have, you you keep saying answers to questions. So what you mean is answers to specific questions that counselors have sent to you that you're compiling? Or what do you mean when you say?
So you see that list, you've got the the table, there's over a hundred and something. We're gonna try to go through that and get as many answers as we can by the twenty third. I'm gonna go through all the council comments and see what we can put together. But again, full disclosure, I, one keeps jumping out. Of, you know, how much would it cost to just do sidewalks? We can give you a ballpark on it, but that, we're not gonna design what that road will, it is what it is and we'll add some sidewalks. But we're not gonna spend time doing that as a concept. So it will be just a very rough estimate. It's not going to be detailed.
Yeah.
And I just don't wanna give a misconception that we're coming back with designs when we're working on concepts.
So my my question in this process as laid out is, it was my understanding coming into the meeting tonight. And I understand that it has shifted for good reason because we need to develop a clear process. But what we said at our last council meeting. Was that we would come into this meeting tonight as a council, having looked at the hundred of public comments document which was sent to us and have a discussion as a council. About those hundred and something, whatever it is, comments and what we see as a council in as themes in those comments. And what we would like to direct Sabego to respond to for themes that showed up in those comments. And I believe that step to be important.
Yep.
Because while I think the minutia of every individual comment and getting an answer matters, I also think. Doing our job as a council to take a look at what themes are emerging and being clear with our contractor about. These are the themes that we see and that we need to see addressed in order to there be, for there to be a plan that as a council, we think we'd be willing to. You know, vote yes on is important. I mean, it's a, it's a lot of minutia questions and that's important, but there's also the. Counsel doing our work and saying these are our, whatever we call them, must haves or want to haves or whatever we're calling them back to the contractor. So my concern with process is that it's not important to me that we do that tonight. It is what we said we would do tonight. I don't mind if it's not tonight, but it matters to me that it happened early and soon before I'm asked to take a vote. Because I am not ready to take a vote. Until we as a council have that discussion and talk about what themes there are that we've seen that we would like the enhanced plan to address. Enhanced plan doesn't have to exist yet, but our clarity as a council on what we're asking that enhanced plan to have is important to me. I don't know where anyone else feels, but I don't think it's enough to say to Sabego, answer a hundred minutia questions and don't hear from us that these are themes. That we think need to be addressed for this plan to be something we see the community wanting to move and the council wanting to move forward.
Oh, I would say that I, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense for us to help guide some more focus. But I'll also say, I really appreciate how you laid this out and how much emphasis you've placed on public input. Like ton of meetings, having a focus group. It's my understanding that this amount. Community input is not usual for these processes either. Uh but I appreciate that you understand that that's something that you care about a lot. Uh and I really like the look of this overall. I think that this really is in in line with what I I wanna see. Uh but I I do agree, Sarah, I think I I I would like us to soon give some additional direction. Uh even before we get to that that point where we're.
How much, yeah, I think we've gotten a lot of of input and. In it, when the themes that have emerged from it, and I and I think, you know, we've heard pretty strongly around the the could you, the um roundabout right here and it seems like that's. Perhaps a non-starter. I'm not ready to get into, you know, you know, how the park, the parking spot issues and stuff like that at the council level.
Parallel parking on Mill Street.
Right.
Seems to be fairly consensus-ish.
Yep.
That we're gonna keep it as is and why are we showing concepts? So one of the things for that first concept plan is to go back to Sabego and just say. Go right in there, bullet number one, we're not gonna do parallel parking.
Yep, and we're not gonna say.
The recommendation of the town. And that's what I'm trying to get to is to get them the information. And Sarah, you're dead on right. If there's some other key decisions that you know. That we know, yes, I need to hear them. I wanna, cause I haven't, I haven't been able to figure out how to figure out which ones we're certain of yet. It's been so much more questions process minded. I felt I had to focus on that because I felt I couldn't get to.
So we had, we had two, we had two responses to the, you know, let's share the information. We. We do this in a certain, we have a, there's a method to this, right? We meet on, you know, Clint, Sarah and I meet on Monday and Mondays in between. We shared the, we shared um. The information with counselors that, you know, invited, we get some good responses from a couple of you and. It's, how do you make that? How do you, how do you bring that forward? How does a council do that? I mean, we're gonna go through. A hundred different, the whole matrix and spend time doing it, cause let's, you know, if we're gonna do that, let's schedule a meeting and starting at two o'clock and we can work our way through it. But. I and I guess the question is, I think I'm hopeful that this resume, perhaps this resolution gets. We work on it over the next. Period, we got a month between now and the Ju- July, September twenty third meeting. Perhaps there's an opportunity to work in those key elements. Into the resolution, so we signify what our, I mean, it's gonna be like four or five things. It can't be, you know, like, don't go down pine, don't. Mess with Pine Street, you know, that kinda stuff. Um but that's kinda how I I think about it.
I think that's a good idea, Dan, to include them in what the resolution is. I think, I don't think it's a, has to be a million hour discussion. I think it's a. Charge to each of us as a counselor and to look at those hundred comments, figure out what themes you think are there. Come in with your own list of the three or four themes we each see and sit down and talk about what those, they could be all compiled into one document of everyone's three or four. So we have a list when we come into the meeting of here's the ones that each counselor believes are there and maybe that's ten and we talk about how to get that down to four or five. I think that can be an efficient meeting, but although it's true that this is a month of time, we have exactly one meeting. Between now and the meeting where we're being asked to vote on the twenty third, according to this schedule. So unless we think we're gonna do that at the meeting on the ninth. I don't think the twenty third is a reasonable schedule. I think if we can do that on the ninth, it's a fine schedule. So that's personally where I'm at.
It's like two weeks.
Yeah, I guess um, thank you Clint and everybody for doing this. Um I echo a lot of what what Clint was saying in that. I think we are on a time crunch here. If we, this is, in my mind, this project is a. Once in a generational opportunity for this town. So um either we've gotta decide that we're doing it or not. Um so, you know, I think time is of the essence. Uh and so, you know, as far as the 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 timeline, I mean. I've read through these comments. Um yeah, I have a lot of just. Specific minutia-driven budget questions, but nothing that I think, you know, would really hold up. Moving forward in my mind. So looking at this list, I, you know, some big themes have already jumped out at me as far as, you know. Roundabouts and right-of-way issues and and so I, in my mind, I think it would be pretty easy for us to. Come to an agreement to say, to to go back to Sabego, say, listen, we liked your plan, however, you know, we need to see it. Without. Taking of right away, uh such taking or, you know, less round or something to that extent. I think that'd be pretty, pretty easy for us to do and because. There's a lot here, but there's some big themes that keep repeating.
Yeah, I agree. I I agree with um Jacob. I'd I'd like to move forward on this um expediently. And I feel like I'd be ready to come to the next meeting, prepared to say, I heard a lot about uh safety for children as a theme that a lot of people expressed. You know, I think, I think we can have an efficient meeting and coalesce around some of those high priority things we've heard over and over in order to. Really push this process in the direction that we have some good public input suggesting um we'll make it a better plan for Orano.
So what if we workshop, what if we take the next two weeks as individual counselors and we could approach Clint to the extent we need to with questions? But then come into the meeting on the ninth with. Uh at the end, that that mean, that's a regular business meeting. So toward, at the end of that, we tack on a conversation about what direction we wanna see. For this resolution in terms of four or five key themes that we think we have consensus on. And then we still just keep that and we could table it if we have to, right? If we get to the twenty third and dab nab it, we don't have it. Um, right, Jake, I did that for you. Yeah, first one. Um it'll be last, we can get, we can push it from the twenty third if we need to, but let's keep, I I like the idea of. I, this is an incredible amount of work that that Clint and the staff have done. Um and it's a process that's gonna lead to a project that reflects what the people of Orano, you know, what commonly wanna see happen. There's gonna be some small things that, you know, people are gonna object to and but this is gonna get us, I think, to really frame out the the project in a way that. And have a lot of engagement and transparency gonna be helping.
I'll also add to that, that um in addition to broad. Designed. Um, sorry, broad design ideas. I think there are some bigger budgetary questions that, you know, particularly. We should know also before we agree to spend three hundred thousand dollars. So um, you know, our our themes are not just design related.
I agree with you. I have a question about that in a minute. And I I wanna say, I think that's a great idea, Dan. The thing I'd like to clarify about that is what I don't want us to do. Is just show up here with all of our ideas verbally and nothing visual that we can see as we're having our conversation. So I really would like to ask if we could as counselors. Send what we think are the three or four themes that matter most in our community based on the input we've read in the next plan to Clint. So that we get a list that we're looking at as we talk. It's much more efficient and much better way to organize discussion. So I would like a date by which we get those to Clint. So he has time to compile them for meeting personally. If nobody else likes it, but to me, I'm all about coming into the meeting and being efficient and having things to look at and discuss.
Yep.
Okay with them, yeah.
That work, what do you, what would be a good timeframe for the for that? Knowing that you gotta bring us a document on the ninth and it's gotta be part of the agenda that goes out three days before.
Yeah, I mean.
We get to it next Monday, a week from today.
In the a week from today.
Yeah.
End of the day, you know, or first thing Tuesday morning, probably. That way if you wanna.
Do last night grand session. So the second.
So that would be the second, yeah, cause Labor Day too. So yes, let's do the Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning.
Day morning, ten A M.
Five is the ideal number, but you know, no one's gonna get.
And so the, the only thing that's gonna run in, and again, this is, this is me opening up a topic as a manager that you're always careful, but I guess input I need. There are things that are coming out and I think Sabego's kinda wrestling with them as well, cause I know staff are where um. You know, well, you know, it's like your two kids. I wanna go to eat at McDonald's and I wanna go to Burger King. Well, you can't go to both. Where are we gonna end up going? We're, you know, there are some of those that we're kinda coming to that this community, one, and I, it's not camps, but there's just general things they're looking for. I think those should be identified, not in the sense that they're. Can be addressed or fixed, cause I don't think they can be, but I think it's would be good to identify, you know, the right of way is only so far wide. We can't fit five travel lanes and fifteen sidewalks and twenty-three bike lanes. It's only this wide. And they gotta go determine that for sure. So is is that something, I don't I don't know if Sabego would have this, but they might be able to put together just a. What the pitfalls, things to be careful of?
I think it's actually not a pitfall. I think that's something we need to look at as we look at that priorities list. There may be some where we say to Sabego, this is clear. The whole community pretty much is saying this, and there might be another one where the community is pretty split on this. So we'd like you to bring us your best compromise between this side and this side on this. It's our job as a council to, I mean, look at community input and then set direction. For Sabego. That's our job. We set the direction. We, some of them we may say this way and others we may say, it seems like you need to find a happy medium between these, right?
Can I just, I I liked, you and I spoke after the last meeting that, yeah, this is a good, we have to do a minimum this, have us come and talk about it, but I I. It felt like in in incredible work, Clint, so this is great. Thank you for.
Just trying to be.
For putting this all together. But um it felt to me that, I was saying we should do it because it seemed like Sabego wasn't. Now it seems like Sabego is, unless I'm misunderstanding this. I feel like they are. That's what they're doing now. And I feel like. For one, uh us interceding and saying, okay, give us till two weeks to, for us to put our input. I'm not sure where, I mean, they collect, I I really have felt like from the beginning, this was Sabego's job to do. They took the community feedback. Now they've gotta, they've gotta boil it down and come back to us. I'm not sure, I don't, I I'm a little torn on whether we should meet and talk about and say, these are their, these are, I mean, if it's like, these are the hard things that we heard. Just to make sure they get it, that's probably not bad. I don't know if now this messes them up because my understanding from this was. After tonight, we say, yeah, this, we wanna hear from Sabego. And just to clarify, I, you just said they will have a final um. Concept plan. So it's, they will have a different concept plan than the two. Not different.
They'll take the concepts they've given you and they're gonna boil down based upon what they think they heard.
So it is gonna be.
It's just gonna be A or B.
It would be some, you know, and again, it it may say, and a good example is, you know what, right turn out of pine? No, we heard that. We got it. I think they have. I'm pretty sure they've heard that one. And so you'll see, they're not gonna go redraw it. They're just gonna say. Clear community input. This was not an idea or concept they wanna pursue. That's what I'm expecting to come out of them. And that's one though, I'm like, well, don't do it yet because. If there's things that we're worried they may miss, and that's why I I came back and said, let's do an enhanced. Just in case there's things that are missed, we'll finish this concept up in the next month, give them our feedback and then. And I'm gonna say that, I said it earlier, I'll say it again. Maybe we get here on the twenty third, you see the concept, you see the feedback and you realize. They did get it. We don't need an enhanced set of drawings. That's what design will give us. Go get them. I just don't know where you're gonna get or where the community's gonna get, so I'm kinda layering as many paths as possible to get us to the finish line. Cause they gotta keep us in this, I, we gotta keep it getting towards a decision.
You know, I think the thing is, is that I agree with you that if Sabego has a written list of what they heard for themes that they wanna share back with us, we could start from that. And go, here's the written list of what they heard for themes and what do we need added to it? That'd be terrific.
Did they not compile the one that we're looking, I just assumed that that was theirs because a lot of it was public, like.
Hey, no side conversations over there with the staff.
No, you was to ask the same question I was waiting to, I was gonna ask him a minute ago, cause I brought it up.
Well, I would just, which as it pertains to Sabego, their role is to take all this information and and have a report. And in that report, doesn't change the concept plan, but talks about what the desires of the community are. One of the other things that they can do in that report are things that it's hard to tell without the next step, which is. The big question everybody has around um right-of-way, right? And where the property lines are and where the right-of-way is. They could suggest that some of these things need to be relooked at after, after that design phase and right-of-ways are set so that. They can, they can then figure out, well, can we actually do this here because of this? Or it's gonna not take as much as we thought. We can actually put. X, Y, and Z in there. Uh it's, it's kind of, this is a really high level and they're gonna give a suggestion on how to move forward. But not necessarily rewrite everything because of these comments. But that, they certainly wanna hear from you guys to say, what what are the things you're hearing and what are, what are the main things moving forward?
But you talk about being the next step. So yours, it doesn't seem logical that we need a three million dollar engineering design. To have a sense for where's the right-of-way and how many trees are, someone had asked me, how many trees, how many of these mature trees will we lose? It doesn't seem like we, that should be a three million dollar study to have a a rough idea on. It doesn't seem like we, that should be a three million dollar study to have a a rough idea on. To to give a response to that, like, oh, we're not gonna lose any, we're not gonna lose any trees, or we're gonna lose X trees.
They did give it to you, it became questions about will I lose my tree and they can't answer that. They gave you a general concept, and then it was, is my tree in front of my house gonna be taken down? And they can say, it's close, it looks like. But they're not gonna tell you yes or no, because you, they're gonna get in front of a process where DOT's got this thoughtfully figured out on how they come in and tell you and say. We gotta take this tree, and this is what's gonna happen now, and that's the fears, we're gonna end up answering every plausible concern. Rather than the ones that are real, and we gotta get to design to know what's real and what's a concept.
So this is where I had asked before, I hear you saying that by the twenty-third, we will have the answer for the specific questions that can easily be answered by Sebago and staff. Where you really already know the answer, people have asked, you can write the answers back for us. So the easy ones, not the complicated ones that we don't know. And quite differently from that is this whole issue of themes that have been heard that need to be addressed. Because some of those themes are as simple as we don't like right in, right out on pine. That one's easy, it's option A or B, it was one of the two, I don't remember which, and so that's easy, it's gonna come back on the plan that they're gonna go with the option that doesn't do right in, right out. But some of the themes are more complicated than that, they're not included in option A or B right now. For example, the theme about people would like a protected bike lane that is better protected from the car lanes, there is no plan they presented us that provides that. So asking them to do that is asking for something beyond what they brought us so far. Which is again, why I think this discussion as a council about some of those themes is important, because if we want to say. We need you to actually do an enhanced concept with some kind of protected bike lane. We need to have that discussion as a council, we only operate as a council, and we only give directions as a council. So until we have a council discussion and come up with a council list of things we would like to ask, we can't. And my concern again is just that to stay to this timeline, I think we have to have that discussion as a council at our next meeting. If we have a longer timeline, we could punt it off and wait for Sebago to first give us their first proposal and then respond and, but we're hearing, we don't have the time. So although I agree, Leo, that I would love to see Sebago's first and then come up with those themes, I don't think we have the time in this timeline to do that. That's what I see.
So, so let's talk about the timeline. I mean. Is it reasonable?
I don't know.
This, this feels like a very much of a. Fire drill, the way we're going about it, and when we're talking about.
For us to look through comments that we already have in front of us and to do our homework, I mean, two weeks is not. It it's a decent amount of time, I mean, I I can look at this tonight and come up with my themes if I really want to. Um, it's not gonna take an incredible amount of time for us to be ready for a meeting to talk about what we definitely wanna see in this.
Right, but to say that we're gonna, we're gonna make a decision on the twenty-third about spending three hundred thousand short with what are gonna be. Dozens of, I think, really important theme unanswered questions. I don't think they're coming back with. Then I can't imagine they're coming back with answers to three eighty percent of these questions. Um, and I think they're important questions. I I think, you know, when you, if, you know, to to suggest that, well. We don't know what we're taking for trees, there there's gotta be some kind of. Way to have a sense for, yeah, we might lose thirty trees, or we might lose ten trees, or no, we don't think we're gonna touch a tree. There's gotta be some sort of love, because that changes the character of the town entirely when you're coming into Orno. I I love some of the renderings, they look really cool, but if it's barren and all the trees that are currently there, I don't love it. You know, and I think a lot of people feel that way. So. So I think we have to have, we eh we have to, there there's gonna be answers that I I, well, I'm gonna be one vote, but. There's gotta be answers that I I think we're gonna have to hear.
And we may get, and I I gotta say this, we may get to that by the twenty-third, and we may get so close by the twenty-third. That you might just say, let's just bring this back for the first meeting in in October with these three or four more primers. Bumping this definitive timeframes is what I'm trying to get us to, this. Unknown, and we just need more, we don't even know where we're going or where we wanna end up. In order for the staff to be able to manage this with their consultants, we gotta know where we wanna end up. This is a timeline that can keep moving and we can keep adjusting, but at least we got something to start with, and that's kinda what we're home for, and. Truthfully, I think as way I hear few, it's a great question, I think is one we caught, let's, could they give us a guess, and that's what it would be, that you're gonna lose. And you know, we're not talking end for end, because there's not many trees on the far end. But in this, in the downtown corridor, the historic district, you know, you might lose twenty trees.
And I think that.
And that's not a statement of fact, that's a hypothetical.
You're getting emails tonight.
Yeah, I know.
I think that's great, I think that's really like important, because I do think that even when it's not possible to say, is your specific tree gonna be gone? They should have an estimate of how many they think are likely to have to go in a range, and it probably depends on which plan we go with. Right? There's probably less trees that are gonna be lost if we don't need a protected bike lane from the cars, and there's probably more trees that are gonna be lost if we do. That's the truth, it's a hard truth, I wish it wasn't, but I'm guessing that it's likely to be that way, and putting those out there. Clearly for the public and for us is important. I have one thing that sort of tags on what Jacob was saying. Beyond this issue of talking about themes in the public comment. I also do think that it's financially important to have a point of comparison, which is not like if we did nothing. Like if we do nothing and then the sewer breaks and we have to rip up the street. For me, the point of comparison that I would like as a financial figure might be very different than others, I'm just gonna say the one I would personally like is. The most consistent themes I heard from the public were better crosswalks all on Main Street with push button lights and hopefully raised speed bumps. That's the biggest one I heard. The second one I heard was get the telephone poles out of the sidewalks, right? And then the third one was make better bike lanes, which could be anything from banning parking on Main Street, so you don't have to zip around parked cars. To creating a protected bike lane. But the first two are pretty concrete and clear, and I would like an estimate of what it costs us to just. Do the raised crosswalks with push buttons and speed bumps and get rid of the telephone poles in the sidewalk, just that. So I know, like, that's the minimum the town seems to want, and it would be helpful to me to know what is that minimum cost, for all I know. That comes out of close to three million, and then it's a pretty darn easy decision, or maybe it's one million and then it's a harder decision. So I would let some point of contrast that is the bare minimum. Community seem to want as a price point to compare to.
Yeah, but it's hard to say what was the bare minimum of the community, I mean, it's hard to put, like, you can't say. Town wants this, the town, it's hard, it's very hard to say, it seemed, but it's very difficult to. Um, to really articulate those things and then, I don't know how you. Put a price, you know, truly estimate those things between now and um. September twenty-third, maybe you can, maybe you figure, yeah.
Two million ballpark. Yeah, I think it's important, because there is also an assumption we're making. I get it, it's this cool opportunity, and I'm really excited by the opportunity, don't get me wrong, I think it's great that there's this great opportunity to do something with the Route Two Corridor. But we also have to compare, like, what is it people are trying to accomplish in the project, and if the top things cost way less than the whole project. That's something to at least look at before we make a financial decision in my mind, maybe I'm the only one, but that's for me.
I I would agree with that, I I do think we need probably have to have further discussions about the race. I like them, I like their, but I but I've heard as much negative feedback of on on, you know, the. Our EMS vehicles and whatnot hitting those things, so I think that's a, but for sure, a theme was. We need some more crosswalks, and they like the lighter ones, that's a scene, we we've done, we just did four on four staff, so. That seems like we know what that costs to me, that that shouldn't be a big ask. Um, poles on the sidewalk, I don't know, and I think, you know, people, better bike lan- better bike lanes or or concern over bike and pedestrian safety. That said, I I still would like to see how that's quantified, you know, what's better than what? But but that's a deeper, deeper discussion, I guess, but it it is a theme that everyone's liking, or everyone seemed to refer to, so.
Usually we get that in design, which is the whole purpose of these pro- this process, is to get to get into a design. That, and that's where you start to get the answers to those kinds of things.
To me, that's not the case. To me, it's our job to have a back and forth between our contractors and us, with us continually saying, here's the themes we're hearing from our community. And them continually giving us information, and I don't think it's a, we say nothing until the last second, I just don't. And I feel like it's a really big process point that in these processes coming up, where there are other public meetings. I would really like it in our process commitment to the public, that we don't hold public meetings unless we're gonna expect from the contractor. Some kind of response back that says, here's the themes we heard that we're gonna try to address, and the council always has a discussion of our own about what themes did council here. And if they don't match, we figure out why they don't match. I think it's irresponsible to the public to hold public meetings and not do both of those things after every meeting. And if it's not in our current contract, I respect that, but I want it in future contracts. Is I just don't like holding public meetings and then saying, we heard a lot of minutia, but we made no sense of that minutia and came up with, you know, themes.
Well, I I think the best sample example of us doing that in my time on the council was the work we did when and the. You know, to the survey we did around the town manager search, and the the data we got out of that from Sonia, she led. And I think that is, that's the aspiration, whenever we hire someone to help us think through, what is it, gonna have public meetings, you're gonna get feedback, you're gonna. If it's not, it's a very small fraction of Orno residents, just created these public meetings and submitted comments and things like that. And people who couldn't attend, you know, so I think that is the right. The right way to kind of frame out what it is you're trying to do and the priorities you're searching for, and you know, that wasn't how this got started. And you know, none of us around this table were here when it started, so that's kind of a, you know, there's a. And I think Clint, I do think Clint's, the process Clint has put together kinda catches us up on that. And we're gonna hear a lot from this focus, these focus groups, we're gonna meet eight times, and they're gonna tell us a great deal about. And they're gonna be representatives in the focus, can you just explain maybe a little bit who you think is on these focus groups, Clint, in terms of?
Yeah, so I I mean, and again, it was kind of the the two parts and with what I've heard, but the focus group was to bring in. And their primary focus is to focus the community. Hear many, 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 many voices, but to keep them on task, so I think you need the community leaders that would represent. You know, that aren't going to be specific to, but maybe some of butters, maybe some people with expertise in. Bike pet issues that, I mean, you got a great wealth of knowledge here in the community to kind of put that together. And then, and working with the staff, but I think it's, they're more of your your parliamentarian. Of the focus group meetings to say, let's really own in on a topic and and get answers and questions and and figure out what we want. But that was kind of the thoughts I thought to lead in with, um, council representation, I was thinking more, that's more the work group. Group than the focus group group, um, because I thought the council, it would be a good opportunity for you to tend to focus group as a citizen.
Yeah.
Not as a counselor and being expected to run that. You will have your opportunities, this is give a chance for you to just kind of step back. That's the general con- the concept.
You see someone like from, kind of someone who's really affected by the the Forest Bennett kind of mess, maybe a, not the. I'll pander, I do it all the time, I'll be a business owner in, you know, the village, who's got something to share about parking and stuff like that, so and how. Things affect traffic flow for businesses in in the village, but that's kind of how you see it.
And a person probably with high community, good aptitude, yes, this is my issue, but I can now have empathy for the other person's issue and figure out where the. Common ground is for all of us, so I mean, it's a, it's a, it's gonna be a, I mean, you got a talented group of people in your community. It's gonna take some time that they step back and realize this is big on process, can can we get through it, and I think it's fair.
I I would add that, I think the biggest theme to the whole thing is slowing traffic down. And Orno stops just kicked off, we have a sign there that is collecting data that is probably usable. Re- I mean, I don't know, hopefully it's collected pre-college being, university being in session and then po, that'll be different. It's quite honestly, it's kind of getting to the point, it gets to the point with the morning commute, it's not really a safety issue, cuz cars are moving, they're crawling, basically. Um, but it's the rest of the time, and you know, I I walked in Grove biked and w- with young kids on Main Street. For about twenty years, and honestly, my my biggest concern is distracted driver, people with their eyes down. We're not seeing anything about that, but that does speed into slower traffic, and slower traffic is the theme. So is a thirty million dollar project gonna be what is gonna slow the traffic down, or is what we're doing. With Orno stops, maybe creating reputation, and again, if we're, if we're, the data tells us right now that. Ninety percent of the cars cresting that hill are doing thirty-five. Then we know we have a problem that is solved through enforcement, right? You enforce that for a couple of weeks, whether it's warnings and then tickets or whatever, warnings first, but you enforce it, the reputation is there. Said it before, we've all from forty years ago. I don't speed through VZ as a rule, and that's in my, I've never been pulled over there, it's just in my head that they're bad there and they're they're not bad. But so I mean, I think.
I don't want us to simplify this either to just slowing down traffic, I mean, a huge theme. Eh, if, you know, we're picking through these, uh, is also bikability, I mean, trying to. Incentivize alternative forms of transportation or climate-friendly transportation as well as just. I mean, I'm a biker, um, and there are spots of this that are really challenging to bike through, I mean, I have to get up on the sidewalk, and then sometimes I'm like in the way of somebody else. And I have to figure out how to get back off of there. Um, trying to create more sensible bike lanes in whatever way that makes sense all across this route. Um, is, it seems to me in reading these, that's also a. You know, big priority, mentioned again and again.
Agreed, and and I think we heard a lot, there, we have two schools of thought on the on the rotaries, like.
Sure.
Somebody with a kid doesn't want their kid in that, and it's mixed traffic, and I so, a- agreed, that 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 is, that is also a theme. But again, the hardest hardest part of Main Street is people parking in the street, right? We've got nice bike lanes on on all of Main Street. The bridge is an issue, and parking is an issue.
Yeah.
I don't.
I'm just saying, I mean, I think I do wanna see us come into, uh, well, I want to send our concerns in a way that we can all look at together and then. Come into the ninth meeting, coalescing around what we really definitely, as a council, see here. Um, to help focus this process initially, um, while also knowing that, I mean, as a. Concepts, I mean, as as a design actually gets going, I mean, we're gonna have a ton of feedback too to help guide this. I mean, I I'm interested in seeing this go forward, but I definitely want us to have this meeting, uh, on the ninth, so we can give as much. Directive focus as we can.
I I would like to understand as far, we keep saying we're gonna have all this feedback, and and there's two spots where there are public, public input. Um, we just had a meeting with public input, I'm, and and for a minute, it seemed like there was not gonna be any impact on the design. I don't know from this, you know, a meeting to have public input, I I don't know that still. If if there's, if we spent three million dollars in engineering. Does twenty people saying, I don't want a rotary here, or I don't want right-handed, d- does that overcome three million dollars worth of engineering? I don't know, I don't know that it does. So there'll be an input, but I, but what they do with the input is is the most important thing, and I'm, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, I mean, it's not like a design comes and then we have all this, these focus groups, I mean, that's not really what the process, it's like here.
Yeah, it's this one.
Is it correct, Clint, that?
This is the state's method.
Right, to Leo's question on the. Line, the outline you gave us of a schedule down in the yellow section, and maybe there's one sooner I missed, but. I see one in the yellow section that says specifically, council sends a letter outlining takeaways from informational meeting, so. I think you are trying to build in Clint, the expectation that after every informational meeting. Council has follow-up work to do to communicate back to whoever that is at that point, M D O T, right? And I understand M D O T has authority, and also we have to get through a public hearing, and we have to approve our eventual. Three million part of the project, so I would assume they care when we say. We clearly hear that our community isn't gonna like it if you don't do this, so please do it, because otherwise we may not be able to pass this, they must care once, I mean. Or is it true that they could get to the end and say, we don't want your three million, we're just gonna go forward on our own, they can't, right? They have to have a match from us, right?
I I don't say never and speaking, that's when it comes to them, but I find it very highly unlikely. That without our three million, they're gonna implement a design project of this nature. They're just gonna say, all right, goes on the shelf, there's tons of them down there that they have, someday it'll be ready to go, and then they'll redo the estimate and.
Yeah.
The comment will be, why is it now six million and not three million? It's like, well, it's been fifteen years and. Saving costs are up.
It's sort of built in that you're trying to build it in, maybe there can be one after both informational meetings, I only see one, maybe there can be one after wherever the second.
Oh, there's an optional second, yeah, they, and I did that because their second one says. That depending on how things go in there, they're 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 they're, they were concerned that it may or may not need the additional.
Process wise, Clint, I think they're needed after what are called public meetings on there, not what are called informational meetings. Because they say after the public meetings, that's where they're looking for input. So I I guess just we should look at the timeline, cuz I believe it's after the public meetings when we need to do those things. And I just wanna say that I really appreciate our focus on process tonight, and really trying to build a robust process going forward. To be sure that community input when given is taken absolutely seriously and, uh, you know, responded to by council as fully as possible. That it's not, I know as a community member in other communities, I've gone to public meetings and I've said things, and it's been clear to me that they were a farce. That the public meeting was just there so they could claim it happened, and there was no response back, and I really appreciate in Orno that we don't do that, we're not doing that. We're looking at this and trying to be sure that there is responsiveness to this public input, and I really appreciate. There is responsiveness to this public input and I really appreciate this process building to accomplish that, so thank you.
We're gonna have to talk with Clint about how we resource that end of it too, because that's hard work, you know, and we're um. In the communication. And you will have conversations. About communication matters and but how, you know, we you're gonna have to come back to us and say. You know, the council wants to, you know, wants this at these critical junctures. To have feedback to the community about what was heard and and. They listen to this is how it how it impacted the process, so you're gonna have to let us know.
Yeah, you wrote three times now in here and it's not a survey, but there's gotta be some sort of public input. Component that is survey asked. People can actually be posed with the information and give a response, yes, no, different.
I did um. I did um suggest that we welcome some input from folks who attended meetings tonight. Um and then I think we'll kind of put a bow on what we're heard and what we're asking the the manager to do. So does then, does anyone have anything else to add? Would you wanna join the conversation briefly? Great, nope, nope, we're good. Scott, can you use yourself please?
My name's Mike Griffin, I've uh lived or worked in. Out of Arnold for seventy years. What worries me about what I heard tonight is the guy seems to be cast. He must accept this concept. Or you will be deprived of the gift that is being given to you. That's dangerous. What disturbs me here, it's a concept that. Has full of roundabouts. Roundabout, you already got two. On a car. Bar up in Park Street. We had one, of course, on bars now even still. Think of the town, think of the town and the vision of town. Three roundabouts. What are we trying to do in the in this book of records for the most roundabouts any small town can have? What do we, what's the vision? What are we creating? What are we looking to continue the ancient adventures of the town? We want the town to be. Do we just simply need? Crosswalks, some buttons. Slows down. And preserve the town. Also, it is historically then. Must we rush to get money? But we destroy.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, anyone in briefly?
Yeah, again, what Caroline said was very uh important. Now, this week, I'm actually going to walk with James Dubay. He's going to walk and show his pens, his markers where he is thinking that he will have difficulty with. So I haven't walked that with him, so I can't really say this meeting is important to express that. Also going to have a friend uh join us as well, so there'll be several people there. Walking it with him, so what is he going to say? In that, in that, you know, we can make assumptions. My, my, my concern is that um. Is this the last public comment for your meetings or this is just associated with first meeting? I'm going to slightly confused.
We're talking about a topic and because we're somewhat informal and we have these committee discussions, we ask, we invite people. You have something they wanna share to oftentimes participate in the in the discussion. There'll be another formal public comment period at the end. Something that hasn't been, you know, can't be repetitive, we're not gonna talk about the thing you talked about at the first part of the meeting. If you have another topic that you wanna share that's not on our agenda, that would be an opportunity for that.
Well, uh, thank you very much.
Sure.
Where this is all related to this uh highway. Commerce, Route Two. Um again, the input from James Dubay, which is major land on our longest. Way. And uh I think very relevant. It's such is the nature of his life at this time, he's not here.
We're here every other Monday night, we, you know, we post our agendas, come here on the ninth and I mean, if you, if there's information from that discussion. I think it would be helpful to come in on the ninth when we're talking about it.
The critical nature of this timeline, which we were just discussing, it's very important. Mister Griffin. Excellent points and you know, the very nature of our community. You know, these turn circles, they're from a foreign entity. And so in other words, if you look at the cop plans that come out of the U N in Agenda Twenty-One now Twenty-Thirty. Turn circles are, they're cup, they love those, that they they actually go forward to implement it. Oh joy, we're going to do this, we're going to hold a badge on our chest saying, that a boy. And destroy our community, like I said, good point.
We heard him.
Griffin has a great point. Where? He is. Pleasure of the community, you know, bike lanes, making bike lanes, you know, and all this other stuff. It's a foreign group of people. They are no problems, he's a time constraint, very, very good point. Thank you, the time constraint is an issue, it's official. When does we find out?
Thank you. Alright, so I think it, do we have somebody else? I'm sorry, yeah, come on.
Yeah, it's my first meeting, so.
Okay, what's your name?
I'm Anne Fonz of Rosewood. And uh I in coming here for the first time, I felt very much like this was gonna be a very rushed thing through by this twenty-third and everything. And I also thought that if you really taught to the people, the town of Arno, how many really want this? And I don't, but that beside the point. Uh I think that what Mike said is very strong and I think that it shouldn't be rushed through, I think it should be. More the people knowing what's going on and having saying it. Do they really want it? I have, I'm far as saving them, so I go up with the traffic, I'm I'm also with the rotary there. And I go through the other rotary a lot and I think that we have enough room, let's be honest. But I think that it should be discussed a lot more and not pushed through.
Okay, thank you. So. In terms of just giving you the point where we're gonna. Have feedback from the the council and um. But what I heard tonight is we're gonna get, get you some ideas before by next Tuesday morning. So a week from tomorrow morning. Themes that we've heard, themes we wanna, we wanna talk about at our meeting on Monday, September ninth. And so we'll put that at the end of the meeting. And then um we will have. I think when we get to that point, I would like. This, this will be on our agenda at on the Monday, September twenty-third meeting. Um and whether we, whether we act then or not, it's gonna depend a lot on what, how much work gets done in the month. But I'd like to keep it on, you know, as a pencil on that calendar, that agenda. And then it, and then we'll have to decide as a council whether we're ready on the twenty-third to act. I would very much like to be in a position where everyone's comfortable acting. Um and if, you know, we have to take a little more time, if we think we can get more people on with a little more time. I'm definitely open to that and I would, I'd move, I'd be the one to move the table it. If I, if it's clear that, you know, but I think that um. I'd like the idea of a month from us from now, given the um, we have a chance to have a resolution in. Around about, we've worked towards that and if we need a little more time, we'll take it. But let's not say, you know, after Thanksgiving or anything like that, let's keep, I think that's what we, that's my sense of where we. Where we wanna go and we'll all have a chance to. You know, weigh in more and hopefully vote on the movement. Matt, you didn't. You alright?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
One question only, just in response to.
Sure.
Some of the public comment, I, and I think maybe the answer is no, but I just wanna ask. So I know there'll be lots of chances for more community input in this plan when we get to the focus group stage and there'd be more public meetings happening. Is there any chance for more community input in these next two weeks before we meet again? Assuredly, community members can still email in.
True.
Their thoughts about the plan. Um I know Clint, you mentioned there being eventually some survey with specific questions to people. I doubt that's happening in the next two weeks, but it would be out there after that. And in these two weeks, we can just encourage the public to take a look at the information presented. By Sabeo at our last and D O T at our, what date was that? Does anyone know? It's on the website.
July twenty-fifth.
Yeah. And to send your emails in and keep sending these comments because it's very, very important that. Members of the community are here and the more the better, expressing your thoughts and opinions and needs and wants. On this project.
And I would say.
I think someone else might wanna speak.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, sir, thank you.
Where would we send those comments in?
Is a Route Two.
Route Two Project at Orno.
Can you say that louder Mitch?
Two Project. At Orno dot org.
It's on the website.
And there's also a general comment site on the website that you made a Route Two comment.
R O U T.
And honestly, if someone didn't get that and they sent any comment to any town counselor or the town manager. We will forward it and they will add it to that file, so if you get it to any town staff or counselor, we will direct it there.
And I I tune for people who have specific. We have, there's a lot, you know, we're not looking to set any records on. I heard him called roundies in an email that we got today and I thought it was very. Roundies, I thought, I thought it was. I love, it was a good comment and I liked the term, I thought it was, but yeah, we're not. Nothing's been decided yet, we've got, this is, and I, you know, I don't think we've done a good job communicating. Just that yet and we need to, but there's a lot of, truly, there's a lot yet to be determined.
On the, on that twenty-third meeting. How can we offer a thirty-minute block? Because a lot of people showed up for that public hearing. And. We've got a spreadsheet with a lot of comments. They're gonna be boiled down by us on the ninth somewhat and then they're gonna be boiled down by Sabeo. And presented on that, on that date.
Not on this twenty-third necessarily, right?
Uh when we leave the ninth, I would give them to Sabeo, but it's part of the enhanced. It's part of a trying to get to another concept because we need to see it to understand it, kind of model. We've gotta finish what we're on, get all those answers and take that to another step, additional, that's what the timeline.
But but on the twenty-third then, we're we're not gonna hit, we're not gonna hear from Sabeo, correct?
Was not expecting them to present.
On the twenty-third, initial Sabeo concept is shared.
Yes, it's a draft report.
But will we have a draft report, not with their presentation, but a draft report or the one we already saw?
They owe us a written report, I asked them not to finish it because we're still talking about what we want them to do. So my hopes is that this week I'm gonna tell them where the process we're kinda going on. Knowing where we need to be by the twenty-third, which is they need to wait till the ninth. To hear our themes and then by the twenty-third, I wanna see if they can finish that first concept. Meanwhile, I also wanna talk to them, what is it gonna cost or take to do an enhanced concept? Because we need more information still. And that's why I'm thinking is where we're headed and that's going to be more money that we would have to figure out how to find and. Hopefully through ARPA and something, we, who knows what's happening with all our projects, but we can find it. But we're making more decisions to get better information and better information is going to have some cost.
So we hope that there'll be a written draft report by the twenty-third, we hope, but there will not be a formal presentation on that.
No.
I'm Clint, thank you.
So I mean. So we're gonna have a written present.
Written report.
Written report and be asked to make a decision. To spend the three hundred thousand to move forward and there's really not an opportunity for the public that did participate. To to have any true dialogue with.
No, that's the timeline, you need more time with the timeline, take a look at the timeline. After the twenty-third, it kicks off an eight-work week period where we've made a commitment to three hundred thousand dollars. But we're not gonna let them go forward and do any design till we come back with an enhanced report, taking that concept to another stage. And if they, if we don't like it, you get another pullout point right there. But again, we're buying a lot of time using all of our ability to work, not in a sense to rush it. But again, to also understand that we're in about month eighteen. Of when this project originally kicked off. And you may not have had the best process to this date. But there's been a lot of work done to get us to here and they have timelines and objectives and goals that they have to meet. To the taxpayers in the state of Maine and the federal government as a whole, so we gotta tell them if we're in on this project or not, not in a sense to rush it or change it. But in a sense to keep the process moving, as long as we're moving, I think they're with us. If we're stalling, which I'm trying to prevent us from looking like.
So commit three hundred thousand to keep moving. But but we've committed that, that means, that means, that means we're committed to the engineering, which is a three million dollar project.
And what I'm telling you is in that eight weeks, they're not gonna hire a firm, start their work and do anything, they'll get all the things done, it's gonna take them a lot of time. I'm leveraging that we're ready to go, we're gonna get our stuff done, you know, we're gonna get more stuff done. And they now know that that may mean we yet, oh, oh, we're reversing our decision. But again, reverse of the decision is council rules, someone who voted in the majority is gonna have to change their mind. To make that motion to change your mind, that's why you have the rules you have, this isn't another chance for, okay, the. Four of us that do want it and the three that don't, we're gonna talk it out again, we're still gonna get to a four-three vote. You're instituting your processes because I'm hoping to show that the town is continuing to further the project. We can't get answers to the what ifs of if we don't commit, what happens, where will we link? How much time do we have? They're not gonna, they're not answering them, not because they don't want to. There's so many other projects in the queue, they're waiting for the project people, all these other fifteen towns to come to them. And say, we're ready to keep going.
Jacob? I I will, so I just wanna be careful about, you know, saying that we're rushing this process or yes. Um there are some deadlines, however, um. We started with the public meeting back last spring that I participated in. About what we wanted to see. We also talked about this project during the budget process and then Sabeo presented it to the council and we had a public meeting, so I guess I. I what, we're, I don't believe we are rushing this through, there have been opportunities.
And multiple plans before that.
Yes.
The foundation for the plan.
Yes, there's a lot more work to be done, but we're. This, this didn't happen overnight.
Yeah, and we're working hard to create awareness and ask for input now. And it it may seem like for people who haven't been involved, it may seem like it's.
To be fair, the two concepts were first presented what day to the public?
February.
These two concepts?
We had the first presentation of February, there was a concept in February, right?
No, no, there's an idea and the public gave them, we were, they set us down as workshop to figure out what we wanted it to look like.
Okay.
Said that.
So the first concepts were just presented at this.
What's gonna be built, I mean, their concepts are, it's kind of designed, there's nothing. As I, as I understand it, the concepts don't go to D O T and they just say, just design this precisely what we have, it's.
Right, but they've been presented with a lot of questions, so that's why it feels to me like we're rushing it and we'd be putting the carpet for the horse to say. Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, you know, here's our ten percent, we're in, you know, now tell us the answers to our questions. That that is a, that seems like a completely backwards.
And I don't hear that from Clint, I hear that we're going to try to get answers to as many of those questions as possible before the twenty-third. I agree with you Leo, that in an ideal world, I would like the enhanced concept done. Before we had to make the decision on the three hundred thousand, I'm just not sure we're in the ideal world right now. And we have to look at that on the twenty-third, I'm not sure, I may be totally with you on the twenty-third that I'd rather delay this decision. I'm very curious to see what themes we come up with as a council, I'm very curious to see what the Sabeo plan comes back stating. And from there, I've heard clearly from Clint and from Dan and from staff that on the twenty-third, we can vote on the resolution or say no, we're not ready to vote. We need to see X or Y or Z before we take that vote, correct? Yeah, thanks.
Okay, ready to move on? And we're gonna move on. What's that?
I wish to say a point of order.
I don't know if we have standing to say a point of order in our meeting.
Well, it's a question.
Alright, you can ask a quick question.
Andy Perkins, eighth of a mile.
What?
Andy Perkins has an eighth of a mile unproved road. The engineering cost for that unproved road to become an improved road, one hundred thousand dollars. What's the length out here?
Okay.
Okay, that was a point.
That, thank you.
That's. Fiscally.
Okay.
We have a manager update still, right?
Thank you, yep, we've got a lot to do still, so. Clint, you all set with this?
Yeah.
Thank you and thank you for all the work. Next item on our agenda is town manager update. Um that's so, let's hear from the town manager.
Uh some of these are, we're gonna be very short, sweet, the graduate students fair is on eight twenty-nine. And that kind of ties into the Orno stop, but we got some staff going over there that's gonna be involved. And the Orno stops will be one of the things that they bring with them as well, but just wanted to share that's going on. For the U Maine Orno Graduate Students Fair. Pickleball, we've already done it, so we can skip, I didn't know if it's gonna hit, so we left it in two places just in case. Um the Orno stops press event, media advisory and stuff happened this morning, this afternoon, twelve thirty. Very well attended, we're probably all been on the news by now. Um so we'll see it maybe at the uh the later, later hour or first thing in the morning. But again, I was generally very pleased and wanted to share that I think the staff came together very well, great community, I've kind of spirit to it and. Uh it was nice to see a big bus and a police cruiser sitting out there. Uh, it was nice to see a big bus and a police cruiser sitting out there just kind of. Presenting the whole topic.
We had every bus driver in the region there. We had a lot of parents. We had people from the school staff. I really appreciate it. Yep.
And the youngest maybe volunteer, uh, police officer perhaps ever in Orono.
We do have an opening, right, Dan? We can, you know, don't look any further than the town of Orono for that young man that was there today. Oh, and the horn, the whole.
This one, notice on contracted ALS support services. We have a contract that says we, if we have mutual aid agreements, we have a rate. But your fee schedule says there's a rate that we have to provide ALS services to businesses that are in neighboring communities. Or if a community is contracted with a business. Uh, that rate was not being used. Um, we reviewed it and we sent a letter notifying them that they, that the new rate takes effect in a month. And it's a significant increase, but we were undercharging. It wasn't an issue where we're increasing the rate.
The ALS is for those who.
Advanced life support. So if they, what happens if they don't have the right certification on their ambulance when they get to a certain line or they have jurisdiction? Someone with that has to meet them and escort them and Orono has been doing this. Other communities have been dropping some of these organizations. We're continuing to help. But we reviewed the fee schedule and said, no, this council adopted this fee and that's what you're supposed to be paying. So just wanted to update you if you hear about it, it's.
So we're gonna raise the rates for what we do. It seems like probably going up. Is that what?
The rate is going to the higher rate. Yes, it's, yeah, it was around a hundred dollars, uh. Flat, hundred, a hundred and fifty dollar flat fee. It's now five hundred.
Which is the rate that we are paid or pay out.
That's we charge them to give them support. Yeah.
And so we're.
Going to increase our revenues.
We'll see what happens with that.
And it's more market sensible. That's what other.
Agreed.
Yeah, so we're just letting you know. Um, sewer rate discussion get moved to nine nine, you know that. Um, the council has a, there's, again, I'm learning this, but there is a requirement to notify. It's also a requirement to accept. But with acceptance of a grant, that's usually a vote. The, I just wanted to let you know the police department is pursuing a grant. Um, through the Bureau of Highway Safety. They will see, we may or may not get it. Um, the match will be determined more closely and it could have as much as a twenty percent match. But some of that may be already in the budget, so it's matched. It's already allocated. But you will get to approve that later, but I just want to make you aware as we pursue grants here and there. This is one that they've queued up and they will be applying for. Um, and this is kind of how I'll probably announce them and share them. That way you're not making a vote to get a, go after a grant that we haven't even got yet.
Yeah.
I didn't quite understand that step and it didn't say that you had to, it just said you had to be notified. So this is the notification step. Um, and then the last, uh, property tax commitment, bills will be going out soon. Um, this could be an entire workshop every year to talk about how commitments work and what we do. Um, we're working with staff to get more information out for the community. Um, mill rate is dropping. That's going out in the letter to the, to the tax bills, to the citizens. But again, there was across the board increases as well as a lot of new value came into the town. Some new properties right here, very large investments, uh, hotel. Uh, private sector business on the other side of the river, you know, they all came in, those change your values. So, um, some people, as is the case just about any year, are going to see their bill go up. Some may see it slightly down because the mill rate dropped and some will see it pretty much the same. Um, so you kind of get that, that effect across the board. But, um, you will see a lower mill rate, but the lower mill rate, again, that just makes it equitable. Mill rate doesn't set your tax bill. And make sure you're equal. We are raising more money through taxes this year than we did last year to support school, county and town. And our valuation is up a lot. So that's what led to the lower bill rate.
How much lower did you say the mill rate is?
Drop down to twenty one, three, five, if I'm remembering right off the top of my head.
Which was down from twenty three, something?
Twenty three eighty.
Yeah, so down significantly.
Yeah, big drop, but against, there was some cross the board valuation changes. Um, I mean, talk to the assessor. He saw values in the seventy percent variance sale to assess value. Um, we were getting low, under the ninety percent threshold the state has in their. Requirements, we had to make some adjustments to, to stay there. But again, overall, yes, some people will see higher tax bills, but nothing's. To do with how we did it. It's based upon your budget, the value of the town that we set.
I do think a workshop to kind of walk us through that at some point makes, makes some sense and, um. So I, I don't want to be celebrating back the people on fixed incomes are paying more because they live next to, you know.
Yep.
You know, comps that have gone up and I'm happy to celebrate how tech and hotels coming out of the, on the tax base. Um, so it's kind of a tough.
Yep, and we can run over that and talk about the different ways that we can do it and what the ins and outs, because there is a lot more to it than just.
Yeah.
Mill rate went down, the mill rate went up. That's.
Yeah.
Not even the beginning of the conversation.
Not getting the tax cut necessarily, so that's excellent.
Yeah. That's it.
All right. The next, thank you. That's very well done. Um, next item that we added an item. I see that Amanda's not here to help remind me what we decided, but, um, we added an item to feature items and items of concern. Does any member of the council have a feature item or item of concern they'd like to discuss? Yep, good. Uh, we'll close that piece out and I think the last piece that we have with the public, we are going to come back in after our executive session, probably to act. So, um, it, it's important for you to see us act on an item coming out of executive session. Stick around, uh, but we do have a public comment, a final public comment. It can be on an item that hasn't been discussed already in today's meeting. Dan? Are you limited to five minutes or less, please?
Thank you. Last year on, uh, uh, eleven September twenty three. I mentioned about a seventy five thousand dollar, um, fine that had been levied on my family on, on the property. And the collection was a hundred dollars a month and it was asked to then the town manager, Claire Vincent. See, the thing is, is it was a reasonable issue that came out of the court case. The town was. Supposed to collect this and then distribute it to the other parties to acknowledge that it's never happened. The end is out there. This is an issue and I wish to open up a discussion on that if you please. Find out where that is. And, um, while I did mention, uh, previously that I had. Reasonable cause to open a discussion. A little concerned because I'm fuzzy about this. Out of council meeting, if two counselors meet, that's not an appropriate thing. Is that right?
Agree. Yeah, two of us can meet and three of us meet and then.
Can meet if we're noticed.
Yeah, we're noticed.
Can meet if it's a noticed meeting.
Excellent. Uh, excellent. So if you would get back to me as to who to talk to, what the protocol, how, how to do this, open up that discussion. I would be very much appreciative.
You asking for a meeting with counselors? Yeah, okay.
Be appreciated.
Yeah.
Again, thank you guys for doing a good job, but there is another part to this. There's this, the finisher that's. The executive meeting doesn't have the other regular town components in the agenda. This is the, this is the time to discuss those issues. Is that right?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Public comment.
Yeah, we're in public comment now.
Yes.
Yeah, second time. And this is a time to talk about, and it hasn't, hasn't been discussed previously, so.
I think I, I think I covered those points.
Yeah.
Quite well, and, uh, so I'm looking forward to having an open conversation.
Okay, when we get, make sure we have, Clint has your contact information so we can arrange to, um, I'd certainly be happy to meet with you. Um, outside of a meeting to talk about your concerns and, um, the better understa, it's hard to, it's hard to follow it in this. I'll be, I'll be honest, it's hard for me to follow in this, in this setting, but.
I'm, I am not without a little bit of complication.
That's what makes, yeah, yeah, I like, I like that. Okay. Is there any other public comment in the room this evening? Thank you for turning it out. It's been, I appreciate you having me here. And Pete, do we have any hands raised?
Not at this time.
Please stay tuned. We have a lot more work to do, so thank you. Um, all right, and at this point I will entertain a motion to move into.
Second.
Move second to, well, I mean, I gotta. No, we're going to executive session pursuant to one MRSA section four oh five sixty to discuss collective bargaining. With ASME Council ninety three. I have a move, a motion in a second and I've read it out loud, so I feel like we, you know, um, Council of Breath Soul.
In favor.
Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Lawrie.
In favor.
Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks.
In favor.
Council Powers.
Favor.
Council Kenny.
Favor.
We're going into executive session. We will be coming out of executive session to act. So after, we'll be back on the Zoom, right Mitch? And Sonia will call you again. Um, from the conference room.
Sounds great. Let me go grab my phone.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Executive session. Thank you. We've declared the executive session over and, uh, we have Council Berthel Soul still with us on the phone.
Yes.
So, um, with that, I would entertain a motion on order twenty four one seventy one and order taking order twenty four one sixty one.
Okay. So move Sonia.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, Council Berthel Soul, you in favor?
I sure am.
Council Baker.
Yep.
Council Lawrie.
In favor.
Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks.
In favor.
Council Powers. Council Kenny.
Favor.
Okay, now we, uh, we have before us an order twenty four one sixty one, order authorizing the town council. Chair and town manager who executed a collective bargaining agreement with ASME Council ninety three. Uh, could we have a motion?
Motion.
Who? Second, Clint, you writing it down, right?
Jacob and Matt.
Okay.
Yep.
And, uh, any discussion? Council Berthel?
In favor.
Council Baker.
Yep.
Council Lawrie.
In favor.
Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks.
In favor.
Council Powers.
Favor.
Council Kenny.
Favor.
That passed unanimously as did our, uh, previous order taking the order off the table. Um, and with that, we are now at, um, adjourn. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Move.
Second.
Seconded, Council Berthel? Council, Councilor, uh, Baker.
Yep.
Council Lawrie. Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks.
In favor.
Six to one vote with Council. We're gonna go seven to zero on that. Thank you, everybody, for staying with us. Yeah.